All right, we will call the meeting to order at 9:03 PM, AM. We have a lot of event meetings. This is the Lakeville Library Board of Trustees, Thursday, July 21st, 2022. And we are meeting here at the library. Present, we have Nancy LaFaye, Ruth Gross, the library director, Jamie. Thank you. Drawing a blank as I'm looking right at it, and Patrick Marshall. All right, we'll start with the secretary's report.
Do you want to waive the reading?
Oh, yeah, if somebody would like to.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we waive the reading and accept the minutes as written.
Okay, I have a motion to waive the reading, and I'll take a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? And it passes unanimous. All right, financial report.
So, like I said to you last meeting, what I have for you today is the final report for fiscal '22 to show kind of where we ended up for the year. We are turning some monies back to the town, which is fine. All of the materials were expended, but there were some lines that we didn't need fully. Like electricity was okay this year, buildings and grounds, there's some money there. And there's always some extra funds in salaries because money is built in to provide coverage for staff, illness, and time off, and so we don't always have to expend that. The second page there is just a breakdown of the materials expenditure. So, behind this worksheet, in my own paperwork or my own bookkeeping, you know, I'm keeping track of all the lines and the invoices, but then I monitor the materials spending as we go along. So, it breaks down what is spent out of the allocated budget from the town. We do spend money from our state aid award that comes as part of being part of the state aid for public libraries program. There is a portion of the assessment that we pay to sales that does count towards materials spending, so include that. The funds that are expended by the Friends for the museum passes does count as materials expenditure. And the Historic Commission always does some updating of the local history collection. So, whatever they expend out of their own budget kind of goes into this. So, the total there is expended is $63,368. The next page kind of gives you, I calculate what we need to spend, so that threshold, which is the 16% of the appropriation based on what we get for a budget for the town. It does not include benefits, so you, your budget, and we have longevity lines, and there's an education stipend line. As far as the state is concerned, they don't calculate your materials expenditure requirement based on any kind of benefits. It's really just your appropriation minus any monies that are in there for benefits. You come up with that base amount, and then I've figured out the 16% of the appropriation. And typically, I do spend a little bit more because you don't, you never want to be under that because it does impact your state aid award if you don't meet that threshold.
I've been there before.
So, we're all, you know, it's like, I don't spend a whole lot extra, but there's always a little bit of a buffer. So, there's just a breakdown of kind of what we did for fiscal '22. The financial report, that's the one-page sheet at the top for fiscal '23. At this point, the only thing that's come out of there is basically a payroll and a day. So, that's all that we have expended is up on the top part for salaries. I will do the first batch of bills actually tomorrow and submit those to Town Hall. So, the next report will have some expenditures out of the expense lines, but there really is no activity because you kind of try to close out fiscal '22, yeah, but Patrick knows there's a whole year-end process. And the final warrant was last week, so any bills that were for the prior fiscal year have to be done. And so, I kind of put everything aside that's coming for '23, but I will do the first batch this week, and we'll have fiscal '23 bills. Down below, I just have the updated numbers for all the other funds. So, the state aid line is there, the library gifts, both general and capital. As far as the capital, that amount and the general gifts, like the amount that you voted to approve for the covering, that has not been deducted from here yet because that project is still in its planning phases. They're trying to work out the timeline. So, that is not reflective, like those amounts are not taken out of these amounts here yet. And the Savis Library Gifts Fund is not, this is up-to-date as of March. So, what happens is the interest reports come quarterly for those. So, there will still be one report that I probably, after they finish the fiscal '22 closeout, I will ask Todd for an updated report and be able to put in, I guess it's April, May, June, numbers and bring that to more of an up-to-date. So, it's kind of, that rolls over a little bit because the reporting kind of happens after, so.
The Arts Council money has not been taken out of this account.
No, no. So, right, the capital gifts there, you'll see, is $6,311. So, technically, you've only got like $1,300 in there because the five is earmarked. I mean, I could do that for going forward, I could earmark it, so then it's a better picture, but I had not taken that out.
So, none of that money came out of budget money, it was all out of gifts?
Right, right, all out of the gifts account.
Any questions on the financial report? We'll go back to Jamie for directors.
No, it's okay. I'm always on the hot seat here. So, summer reading is in full swing. We're super excited, we're busy, you know, we're not quite back to pre-COVID business, but there's definitely so much improvement over the last two summers in terms of traffic in here. Participation in programs is up, and circulation is steadily climbing. So, everyone's super excited that Read and Read is back, so that is, it's starting to feel normal again, which is good. We had a couple of programs already in July. So, Mary Mojo Micek ran the Vision Board Workshop on Thursday, July 14th. So, we want to thank the Arts Council for sponsoring that program for her. Ted Reinstein visited this past Monday, and that program was sponsored by the Friends. So, the summer concerts have been going well as well, and the final in the series will take place next week. We do have some stuff upcoming for August. So, there's Art for Your Mind, the Abstract Expressionists. It's going to be an art appreciation program. So, there's an art historian who will come in, her name is Jill Sanford. She's from the local area, and she's going to kind of walk folks through the works of Kudinsky, Pollock, Grasner, Frank Gethard, and Rothko. I know, I'm sorry to butcher that, for any art enthusiasts out there, but I probably should have asked you, you've probably seen this name before. And so, this program is sponsored by the Arts Council as well, so that is Tuesday, August 16th at 6:30. There'll be another local author visiting us on Monday, August 22nd. Her name is Annie Harnett. She has written a book called Unlikely Animals. So, we're excited about that. And then coming up in September, we have a First-Time Home Buyer Seminar on Thursday, September 22nd at 6:30. So, this is a library-sponsored program where the specialists from Jack Conway Realtors in Lakeville will come and help walk people through the process for a first-time home buying.
Just so you know, I think Lynn just changed to a different company. You might want to ask her before you do the PR.
Oh, okay. I'll reach out and see if she was there.
We had, the Lakeville Historical Society had Jill Sanford, and she talked about early American art. So, she's very comfortable to be with, you know what I mean?
She has, she offers a whole series of different.
Yeah, she's got, you could have her for a whole couple of years.
I know, you could. I was originally going to do that, I was going to try to have like an art series, but just in terms of timing, it was like, okay, we're just going to run the one and see how it goes.
Those series are kind of scary COVID-wise right now, too.
Yeah, and trying to find time in the calendar, which is kind of interesting, too, both in her calendar and ours, because honestly, if you look at the calendar for July, there's something every single day. So, it's either library programming from the youth side, adult side, and now the meetings really are almost back to what they were, the community is coming in and using the meeting room as well. So, it's a little tight in terms of our calendar, but it's good. It's good to be back to business, yeah. So, under Buildings and Grounds, really nothing of major concern, typically.
Except?
Except what?
Condition of the lawns.
I know, they're like.
It's just, it's the amount of time we have on this, on the irrigation circuit, that's what it is.
And it's July.
And this has been terrible. This is usually August, but this has been since the end of June, really, when we started to brown out. So, I don't know if this means we're going to have to do some replacement seeding next year or what.
They cut it a little longer?
Hmm?
Do they cut it a little longer?
It's funny, I don't know that it's the length because the, for example, the flagpole area was reseeded a few years ago.
Right, we changed that.
Plantings were taped out and changed over to grass just to have less area to maintain.
It's nice and green.
And that's green, but it's different grass than.
And it could be that, and we might need to have a more drought-tolerant grass, because grass normally would go into a hibernation-type period when things get rough. So, that's what you're seeing with the grass we have. Any place that's shade is, still has green grass. It's just, it's because we get full sun all day long.
But the flagpole, like, gets full sun, too.
Right, but it's the newest, it's the newest lawn of all of it. Everything else is from 2004, '05. So, it's the older seed, yeah. So, maybe that's something to think about, but maybe we could talk, maybe you could talk with.
Maybe.
Franklin Moniz and see if he might have somebody in his crew. I know he has somebody who's more like an arborist, takes care of trees and everything, has a good eye, and some other people that are plant-sensitive. So, he may have somebody who has, or he may just have general information for DPW information on grass.
Right, so, but right.
And maybe it's one of those things where we need to go.
It doesn't, it never has tolerated summer here, the whole time I've been here.
You know, and this is the worst because we have six days of 90-degree weather, doesn't happen.
Just watering, like, there seems to be something else in terms of.
There's also been no rain either.
No, like, four times.
Yeah, you can.
And we, because we get irrigation in the evening, it would allow the ground and the grass enough time to absorb moisture, so you're not having a lot of evaporation. So, that's not even helping. So, it's, it's the climate and lack of rain, the drought, and probably the type of grass we have.
Right, and, I mean, part of the scheduling is based on the fact that we're tied into the Ted Williams camp. So, that system also irrigates everything that happens over at Ted Williams. They start in the early morning, so we start at about 8:30 at night here, and we run half the zones one day and half the zones the other day. There actually are a few zones that run every day, but it doesn't seem to be making much of a difference. But we can't run longer because then we back up into their schedule.
It's a shared system.
Right, so, we have kind of our allotment, and, yeah, I just, I think it's beyond just the timing. It seems to be related to the grass.
Because sometimes with night watering, you get mold or mildew type of issues. We're not getting that at all.
But I did want to thank the Highway Department for coming over. They've been cleaning up the beds.
Looks good.
Down by Precinct Street and weeding, because it's a lot to maintain, so I do think we have to look at this, like, long-term. As far as the building itself, HVAC, per the usual, some things to tweak this summer, but we isolated the issues, and the advance air has set the dampers by hand. So, for example, I came in in the Friends' room, it was just blowing and blowing, and I'm like, that's not right. So, the, there's a control mechanism that opens and closes the damper. The gears inside there are stripped, so it was like stuck all the way open. So, they set it by hand to not move, because the system is supposed to monitor the temperature, and then if it warms up, it opens up and puts more cooling.
We have a brain, right?
Yeah, each area has a little brain, and then it tells the controls what to do, but if the gear in the box is not working, then it just, so we isolated that, and they're on kind of standby. So, there's a quote pending for making repairs to those. It did seem like you could get a replacement part for that, like, it doesn't mean the whole thing has to be redone, you can isolate the repair, so.
It's also 17 years old, too.
Yeah, right.
So, that's the other thing.
I think we've done pretty well.
We've done pretty well.
Lucky we're in a new life there, huh?
Well, the basement was always cool, though.
So, under other items, just fiscal year closing activities was kind of the month of tail end of June, final bills, budget updates, I have to work over all my worksheets, and then we had department head meetings a couple of times, too. Nothing too much more to report. I'll be working on ARIS shortly.
Yes.
Yes. So, that just compiles all of the statistics for the fiscal year that we have to report to the state, so I should have that report for you all next month.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
It's definitely fun.
It's, I don't know, I have all, I tabulate all year long, so part of these monthly worksheets that I provide you of the monthly picture of circulation and ebook downloads and Tumblr books and meetings and all that stuff, part of the activity of doing this monthly is then when it comes time for fiscal year, I just take all the things and put it into another worksheet. So, it is some work, but it's not, I don't lose sleep over it because I have been keeping track all along, so I just, yeah. But it is, it is an undertaking to put it into the system. I don't know, it seems like it's having some issues this year. I haven't even, I haven't opened it yet, but anyway. So, Friends of the Library, their next scheduled meeting will be Monday, September 12th. They don't meet during the summer. If anything comes up, they will, the officers will confer, but I just wanted to make you aware of their next meeting. And then I have updates in there about the Great Ponds Gallery.
We still have the Wailing City Camera Club's exhibit up, and it's a very, very good photography exhibit. And then, next week will be the beginning, well, Friday of next week, we will be putting up the Historical Commission's boxes, baskets, boxes, and tins.
Et cetera.
Et cetera. And Nancy has all sorts of surprises for us there.
And then there's an opening reception on Saturday, August 6th for that exhibit. Yes. That's that.
Gifts and endorsements and bricks, I don't mind.
So, as far as gifts, I just wanted to make you aware that we, I sent out some thank you letters on behalf of the library to some patrons. We had one of our very, very active patrons pass away, which is always very sad in libraries because you have people that come and visit you every week, and you're always working with them on their book-reading lists and things. And she passed, but the family asked for the donations to be sent to the library, so we did receive a couple of those. So, I sent out those letters. And then also for the gallery, Mr. Martino, who had the exhibit, oh, boy, what was that? May-June?
Yes.
He, May-June, he did make a donation to the library to help support the gallery of $300. So, a thank you was sent to him. Yeah, there's really nothing endowment-wise, that's just kind of the standard language we've used on the agenda. But I don't know, you want to talk about bricks?
Yeah, bricks are in. Bricks are in. We have a couple still to go in because I have a landscaping issue with them, so, but otherwise, they're in. So, they should all be in very soon, and time to place the next order.
Discuss, oh, yes, the vote on the Savis Fund for the youth programs.
So, I gave you a little breakdown of the programming that is scheduled to happen. Ms. Teresa is having One Up Sports come and run three gaming programs, one in July, one in August, one in November. And typically, the Savis Fund is used from time to time to support youth services programming. So, this proposal is to support youth services programming for 2022 in the total amount of $825. Each program is $275 to run.
We had last month held off on the vote just because it wasn't on the agenda, so this is just the official vote here to support the programming. So, I would take a motion if somebody would like to make it.
I move that we support the youth service programming for 2022 in the amount of $825 from the Savis Fund for three gaming programs on July 13th, August 2nd, and November 10th.
All right, Ruth seconds. Any further discussion? While hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It passes unanimous. All right. And goals.
So, I've put together some short-term goals for the first quarter of fiscal year '23. So, this is not the whole goal setting for the library as a department. It's more, I'm recognizing there are some things that we need to be working on over the next few months. A lot of this are things that have been kind of pending, and it was, for me, I thought I just need to put in some guideposts and have due dates and build it into some sort of quarterly planning system, because just recognizing that the last few years have been a lot of, I guess, responding to what's happening and making changes and just constantly managing situations and recognizing that I need to move back into more leadership and proactive things, so it's not just constant reaction to what's going on. We've had a lot of changes over the last couple of years, too, in terms of staffing, but we've spent the year onboarding everybody, and it's like, okay, let's move forward on some things that kind of got backburnered because of COVID. So, I'm just trying to bring them off of the backburner into the front and forward, and then discussing it with you as a board will help to make sure that we make progress on some of these things. So, the first item there is, I think that we need to look at policy review. So, the library does have a set of policies and a policy manual that is for the board, but it predates me. I mean, I've looked at a couple of things since I've been here, but I think it's time for an overall comprehensive look at what we have in place for policies, specifically the material selection policy in light of what's happening nationwide and here locally with people challenging libraries about their collections. You know, you do have a material selection policy in place, I don't anticipate it actually needs to change at all. I think if anything, it's a chance to review it and just re-make sure that everything that needs to be in there is in there and have it just up-to-date in terms of you've looked at it again and re.
Are you noticing through sales that typically other libraries are doing this sort of thing, too?
Everywhere, like, it's not just sales, like, public libraries in the whole country. And there's been lots of activity in the intellectual freedom training. So, basically, the fact that our collections are here to support everyone, they have all different types of materials in them. But there's lots of, how should I say, continuing education out there right now about intellectual, yeah, and revising your material selection policy and making sure that you have. So, we are not unique. This is not an issue unique to Lakeville. I think it's just happening everywhere at public libraries, so I think it would be a good chance to do that. So, I'm proposing the material selection policy, and at some point, I think I had drafted a solicitation policy. It's not been an issue here, but we didn't necessarily have one to probably just put that in place. So, that would be about, like, signatures and putting up, you know, like, we don't collect funds for other groups and things like that.
Coaches, maybe, but.
Right, right, just clarifying that. I mean, there's always been a practice to not do that here, but I don't know if you specifically had a policy, so I think it might be helpful. The next item there for the short-term goals is the Long Range Plan, which is so long overdue here, but I'm putting it in place by September 30th. I will have something for you at the next board meeting about what a plan would look like for that. It would involve a subcommittee of the trustees, or, this will be the question, is do you just designate one trustee to work with a planning committee which would involve staff and community members, or do you form a formal subcommittee? I don't know. We can discuss that more at the next meeting, but I'm putting it in there at least to have action taking on, taking on it by the end of September.
Well, 2020 and 2021 really did impact any kind of long-range plan, group meetings. Zoom is really hard, and you need to be face-to-face.
You need to do community forums and then having surveys out, you know, there were plans. I'm going back now quite a bit. Like, I think it was 18, March of 18, I said, oh, we need to be working on the plan because it's coming up in 2020. And then we were supposed to work on it in 19, and staffing really was what derailed that, because we had some staffing issues for that year. But at this point, it was like, let's pull it back out, we need to get it done, so then we can be applying for grants for some of the things that we might want to be doing here, too. The other piece here on the short-term goals is to launch some of the pending new services. Now, this is going to be contingent on staff training, which is related to the last item on the agenda, is there are some things that I think we should be willing out for the community, so like Hot Spots, Hoopla, Consumer Reports Online, and Ancestry.com Library Edition. So, you know, Hot Spots would have been helpful probably while we were closed, but at this point, I think that they still will be of benefit to the community. Hoopla is another, I guess, online resource, so it's, it's an additional resource for ebooks, but they also do have movies and music in there. So, Overdrive.
Audio books.
And audiobooks, too. So, it will complement what we do already with Overdrive. The idea would really just be expanding those electronic collections, because I have seen, you know, the circulation went up during the pandemic and it stayed there. You know, it's not overtaking the books, we still do more business in physical items, but I think to expand it, especially to the TV and movie realm, because we do not have that right now. Consumer Reports Online, that essentially, they're taking, they're no longer making the print version of that.
I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, the print one is going away.
Oh.
The magazines, I find, every few months, I get a new notice, like, oh, this one's discontinued, this one's discontinued. That's likely the next area of the collection that we may just transition completely to electronic resources.
We have an extra area, then, huh?
Right. Yeah, that's where, yes.
Wait a minute, we've already talked about this.
Yeah, that would be part of the long-range plan, because, right, if do we do some rearranging here.
Reconfiguring this library for the next.
For the next few years. Of its, of, you know, bringing it into 2021.
We're lucky that we have some space that we can do that.
Century. But I think some of that is the natural, I guess, deaccessioning of things as they start to discontinue, and they're only offering them online. We just expand those. We just expand those, that access and then, right, maybe sunset.
The print edition.
I have to look at what the.
See, that impacts, if magazines go away, that impacts a whole industry where paper has, and printing and publishing and all that sort of stuff too, that impacts that part of our economy.
Because in Wareham, they stopped all subscriptions, print subscriptions during the pandemic because nobody was able to get them. And then, except for like the Standard Times, the Globe, and I think Consumer Reports, I mean, very limited.
Limited newspaper.
And then what we've noticed is now that we've reopened, nobody's asked for them.
They come, they adjusted their lives too.
We haven't, uh, we haven't started them back.
I don't think people depend on magazines for contemporary information anymore. There wasn't.
The online stuff goes out some, I don't know what yours is, but.
I do like glossy stuff.
I know, that's the challenge is that.
Putting in a doctor's waiting room and reading magazines.
They still go out.
Coming in subscriptions, yeah, coming in the mail, it's all exciting, there's a magazine in the mail.
Yeah, I mean, we do like okay activity on download. It's probably comparable to, I'd have to look at this, that's where I haven't made a decision.
So is it going to be the same amount? Is that what you're saying? About the subscription fee for a paper magazine or, and the online?
Anything right now, the Overdrive collection that is accessed through Sales Library Network, which we do pay an assessment fee for, most of the titles we get in print are represented there. I have to figure out if there are ones that are not and how we would provide access to that. But the Consumer Reports, it seemed like that would be a better, we have a lot of people who do come in and borrow the magazines. The fact that the Buying Guide, I was like, well, now that's, people use the Buying Guide and then reference the magazine articles within it. But I think making it available online will probably increase the use of that because.
Do it at home.
Right, they can do it at home. And.
If a magazine is online, is there just one issue that's available through this library?
No, the back issues are available.
No, I mean, but just one of August?
No, it's simultaneous use, so it's not like if it's checked out, like the eBooks, if it's checked out, you have to go.
Right.
The magazines are simultaneous use, so you can.
That was.
Yeah, there are certain benefits to doing it.
It's been online for a long time, we changed over years ago.
And you're right, the newspapers, it's kind of, people still come in and ask, so I'm probably going to keep them for a little bit. But, but even Standard Times now, they don't print the Saturday edition. You can get it online, but we, they haven't provided a mechanism for public libraries to do that. You have to have a personal subscription. So that's a whole separate issue, but it's, it's there in my pile of like, how do we deal with this? But, um, you know, at least the Consumer Reports, I thought that, that will be added benefit to what we do now anyway. And then ancestry dot com, this would be to try to bring back genealogy services here. So there is someone on staff who has been working on training on this. It is the library edition, so it's not.
Personal.
It's not the personal, it's not the DNA piece, it's just accessing.
General access.
General access to records and it is only library use, like in libraries.
Right.
But we, for many years, had a volunteer here and people would come in and check in with him about what they were working on for their family research. And, but he was the one who actually provided the access. He shared his subscription as part of the volunteer service. But, you know, pandemic, that goes away and now we just, we do need to bring it back. But it will be part of the staff responsibility, but bringing on that resource. So there are things that are kind of there waiting in the wings. And I'm recognizing that the biggest challenge that I've had to doing some of these things is the staff training time. For many years, we had quarterly staff meetings, they were held after hours. I'm kind of jumping, I guess, ahead, I don't know. But that was the way, because they were held quarterly, I had kind of timed, timed guideposts to, okay, if we're going to be launching a new service or something's changing about something, it would go on the agenda for staff meeting. We'd have all of the staff in the room at one time. I could present what the changes are or the new service or something. And then there would be opportunity for Q and A amongst everybody about what's going on with whatever it was. That has gone away at this point because the staffing has changed and people's ability to be here after hours is gone, is changed. So I, in trying to reflect like, why are some of these things still not done? It's like, well, because I haven't had an opportunity to bring everybody together to do training. And one example with the museum passes, those, when they came back online, when the museums started opening up and things changed a lot with the passes. We went from physical passes to e-passes. The system changed, everybody needed to learn a whole new thing. I realized like, we spent a lot of time working on that because I did basically one-on-one training with everybody or maybe tried to get two or three of them together. But when you're open to the public, it's like the phone rings, somebody goes and answers that. And then you're still trying to continue and then they come back and you try to catch them up. And then even if you're doing that with two or three, they're asking the same questions. Like these two or three have the same questions that these two or three have. And so I found it was, it got done because we were rolling out the passes, but it was a very not efficient way because I don't feel like everybody got the same depth of training on it, ever got to the comfort level in having to realize like you're kind of answering the same questions to everybody individually. There's something about having a block of time to do that. It's much better in terms of patron experience too, because everybody, everybody's trained, everybody gets comfortable. And that's my concern about rolling out new services is that you can't bring something online for the public if the staff isn't comfortable with it, because then it won't get promoted if the staff aren't comfortable with it. So I'm realizing that this is, these things are contingent on having staff training opportunities. Which, like I said, I've included on the agenda to talk about a potential Staff Development Day. And, but I'll continue on my short-term goal list here, I guess. A couple of other things is updating the website. The website we have is fine, but the backend of it is starting to break down a little bit. There are new platforms that are available, so I think we need to transition what we have to something like that for better functionality and long-term growth too. You know, and that may include migrating it to WordPress, I haven't worked out all of the details. But I think that the website for us is the primary vehicle for making everyone aware of what we have and providing adequate access to it. And I don't think our website's doing as good of a job as it could, so I, I would like to work on that. And then related to that, I guess, is implementing, implementing an email newsletter on Libraryware. So I think that our September edition will go out also electronically. We really have only been doing the print one. We make it available as a PDF on Facebook. So it's available electronically on the website and through social media. But I'd like to be able to push things out to people by email. And the tool we had has undergone a lot of changes that now it will be feasible to do a print and recreate it electronically. It wasn't there before, so we didn't really have an electronic newsletter. We can spend time to do both now and send that out. So I think that'll be helpful to make people aware of what we have, especially new patrons. We've had lots of new registrations since opening, a lot of new faces and people coming in and getting new cards. So I think also for me, by the middle of next month, we need to update all of our onboarding materials because we have a lot of things we used to hand out to people and kind of went away during COVID because paper was. And then now at this point, they're out of date. So we haven't been giving them out because they need to be up there. So it was like just putting it on the, the goal list for me and to make you aware, holding me accountable, we gotta get these things done. We, meaning the staff, but.
So in the last month, we had fifty-three?
New registrations.
Wow, that's great.
To save that much influx into the community, is that?
I, um, I think it's people coming back to the library, like, there's probably been some new influx of people moving into town. But I think it's just a whole new generation of people who now have children that are the age where they want to come and take advantage of the programming that's happening and the other resources that they're registering for cars.
Right?
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the quarterly goals?
Good job, Jamie.
Sounds.
Sounds exhausting.
I know, but I just, I think putting in due dates for me will be good.
We're like goals.
Goals, get them done.
Okay.
So in the, the next item?
Uh, yeah, moving on to the Staff Development Day, which ties in with the goals.
With the goals is.
We'll check one off the list.
What I would like to ask of you, I guess, is whether or not we, you would be amenable to closing the library early on a particular Wednesday to provide that window of time for staff training to happen. We've not traditionally done this here. Like I said, we've usually found other times outside of library hours to make it work, but it's just not feasible with the situation that we have. Wednesday afternoons here are typically our slowest foot traffic. There are still some people that come in, but we tend not to do programming at that time. So I don't think it would have as much of an impact on the community. But I think the flipside benefit is if we have the time as a staff to work on learning new services and being able to roll those out, that's, you know, the trade-off is being closed a few hours means we can bring on these new services. So I haven't ever proposed that to you all to close to the public for this, but.
So we typically close at six o'clock on Wednesday, so what time would you?
I would say either two or three.
About two.
Two would probably be better.
Four hours enough.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that would be a big, good block of time.
Yeah, but.
And, you know, we had, we were traditionally having quarterly staff meetings. Now maybe this, with having four hours, we'd only have to do it twice a year instead of four times a year for less time, having those windows of time. But I think to at least get started with these things that we have already waiting in the wings to start here.
This is a good time of the year, it's the week before, week before Labor Day.
Summer league is over. We have found many years that it's a quiet time. People are away vacationing, there's no Little League, like, summer baseball's done, summer reading's done. So it's kind of a downtime anyways, so the impact, I think, in terms of people coming in, it would probably be the least disruptive at this time.
And you're able to get every staff member in on Wednesday afternoon?
At least the full-timers are all scheduled, so I still have to work out some of those details, whether or not. It also involves bringing in the part-timers, I would like to, but in terms of scheduling, it may not be possible. But if I at least have all the full-timers versed in what needs to be done, then we can work with the three part-timers on a one-to-one basis. But it, when the, let's see, one. There's like four full-timers that could be, you know, all at one time. As long as like the, the primary people who are at the desk most hours of the week.
Most contact for the public too.
Right, right. And if, and if the part-timers are available, then they would be included. But if personal traveling arrangements, because they're not normally scheduled on Wednesdays, so they would have to be available personally, but we'll work around anybody that can't make themselves available.
Yeah, any issues as far as union goes with other departments or something like that, that you know of?
Um, you know, I didn't ask that per se. Because usually it's.
Do check with, who is our building room?
Um, well, Teresa's the, the building.
Yeah, I would want to make sure they were aware that we're going to, we want to do this.
Okay.
It usually isn't a problem, but.
It shouldn't be a problem, but it's a courtesy, yeah.
Okay.
So do we need a motion or is it discussed?
I would, well, we can certainly, we can make the motion and keep discussing if we need to. But we'll take a motion for closing the library at two o'clock on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth.
It's August.
August. Yeah. For staff development, if somebody would like to make the motion.
I say so moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, abstentions, train away.
Thank you.
This would make, I think it would make everything easier for people in the long run. If it's one day, four hours, focused, no distractions, instead of trying to find time to get everybody in here for other things, yeah.
All right, anything else that needs to come before us before we pick the next meeting? All right, let's go to the next meeting date.
So Patrick, do you want to stay in person or?
I'm fine with in person if this works for you.
Yeah, Ari's thing came out saying that they're extending it to March twenty-third.
They did already, it was voted.
Yeah, as long as, those of us who are retired have a little more flexibility than those who are employed. So I think we would be willing to make accommodations.
So I think our next meeting would be on the fifteenth, if I have that right, for the third. Oh, God, I've gone to September already, let's go to the eighteenth.
That's good for me.
What a time.
I actually have a library program at ten AM that day.
So let's do a different day.
Is the Wednesday morning better for you though, because you're on the evening, or does Wednesday not work?
The Wednesday, I, should in theory be the easiest day, but then they throw in the department head meetings or this, well, you have the sales meetings too, so.
You're right, that would be.
So as long as we just don't pick.
Did you once say Monday worked for you? Or am I imagining?
No, well, I just. My whole day is, I mean, Thursday works fine for me generally, I just happen to have that one, which.
So would an afternoon be better on that day?
Thursday afternoon, that particular day. No, actually, the eighteenth's just a bad day.
About the twenty-fifth?
I was going to say we could push to the next week and then.
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth is fine, that's why.
I have a ten AM appointment, so it would be, have to be like eleven-thirty or so, or later in the day would be fine.
Yeah, if we just do later in the day, then I can just come up here.
One o'clock or two o'clock, what works best?
Is the one that.
Yeah.
Well, if we could do like three.
Three?
That would work because then, you know, we close at one because the branch opens, so.
So three PM on August twenty-fifth?
And then we'll try to.
It'll be the day after the workshop, you can fill us in.
Oh, yeah, so we can.
There you go. And we can try to set up a regular schedule of meetings so that we're all know when they occur. All right. Is there anything else that, Jamie or anybody? If not, I will take a motion to close the meeting at nine fifty-two AM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, we's out of here.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Megan. Thank you so much. Thank you, Megan.